All right, good evening. Welcome to our September School Board Business Meeting of the SAD-15 School Board. We are missing a few folks, but we still have a quorum. So I'm going to call this meeting to order at 6:31. And first, we will join together for a moment of silence. It's been a very difficult several weeks end of summer in our community. So please join me in a moment of silence for the last.
Can we talk about them first?
Did you want to talk about them first?
Yeah.
Sorry. Dr. Turner is going to speak to these folks first, and then we'll have a moment of silence after.
So we're going to start with Michael Stash. Mr. Stash taught in MSAD-15 for 30 years. He was a beloved teacher to hundreds of Gray New Gloucester students and is perhaps best remembered for the Mars Project, which he did with students often. And I've had kids stop me on the street to talk about that project since the news of Mr. Stash came out. He was a treasured colleague, known for always supporting other teachers and staff. Mr. Stash had announced his retirement from MSAD-15 in July, and he unfortunately passed away on August 10th following an illness. Our thoughts and hearts go out to Mr. Stash's family, his former students, and our MSAD-15 colleagues, who along with me will miss him dearly. We're also talking about Stacy Strater tonight, who is among many things in our community, a former MSAD-15 employee. She worked here in the district for 16 years. She started as the high school secretary before transferring to be the primary administrative assistant for our special services department. Her colleagues here in MSAD-15 remember her as a kind, supportive, and positive presence in her department and across the whole school. Mrs. Strater also served for many years as a class advisor, and she shepherded multiple cohorts of students through all four years of their high school experience. Mrs. Strater passed away tragically on August 16th, and we join all of Gray and New Gloucester communities in mourning her passing. Our hearts go out to Stacy's family, friends, and all the people her life touched throughout the community. And then finally, we wanted to honor Richard "Dick" Barter. He was an active member of the Gray community. He served two terms on town council, and then he also served on the MSAD-15 Board of Directors with some of us here. He was on the board from 2017 to 2018. He brought a wealth of experience to the role. He had a decade of head of school experience in private schools, as well as being on the boards of private schools and universities throughout New England. Mr. Barter passed away on June 27th following a brief illness. Our condolences go out to his family and his loved ones.
Thank you, Dr. Turner. And if folks will join me in a moment of silence for these three individuals. Thank you. And next, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. You have your pick of flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible. All right, and some upcoming meetings. We have September 10th Personnel Committee at 5:30, followed by the Facilities Committee at 6:30. That's at the Dunn School Library. That's a new location for committees, so please take note of that. We have September 17th will be Policy at 5:30 and the School Board Workshop at 6:30. That will take place at Memorial School Library. We are moving our workshops from school to school to provide an opportunity to do some tours over time instead of one big tour day. So there will be a tour of the memorial facility at 6:30. So that tour, like all of our meetings, is open to the public. If folks want to come and get a tour of Memorial School, please join us at 6:30. And that will be followed by our workshop, but that'll be the beginning of our workshop. And then September 24th, our Finance Committee meets at 5:30 in the high school library. I'll also add, in our materials folder for tonight, folks can find a schedule and flyer for the Gray New Gloucester High School 2025 Homecoming. So there's a series of events throughout the week, culminating the big ones in, on Saturday morning, there will be a homecoming parade Saturday, September 13th. So that takes place at the high school. There's competition with the classes and some floats. It's a lot of fun. We welcome the community and hope to see folks there. And then a series of games throughout the day hosted at the high school field. So please come out and show your school spirit at that event. That is it for upcoming meetings and events. I would hear any action relative to additions or adjustments to the agenda. Anyone? During this time, I will speak to what may appear as a bit of an oddity in our agenda. We do have some recognition and business before moving into an executive session. Normally, we do executive sessions at the end of the meeting, but seeing as this is pursuant to a student matter, I'd like to prioritize that family's time and not have them here all night. So we will be doing that. During that time, the board will adjourn to the library for the executive session. It'll go off camera, but we will return afterwards. So moving on, comments from the audience. Any public comment tonight? Sure? Okay. Great. And I would hear a motion relative to accepting as printed the minutes of the July 16th, 2025 Regular Business Meeting.
I make the motion that we accept as printed the minutes of the July 16th, 2025 Regular Business Meeting.
Okay. Anybody find any edits announced? All right, all in favor? Great, opposed? Perfect. And then the same on August 20th, Regular Business Meeting.
So I make the motion that we accept as printed the minutes of the August 20th, 2025 Regular Business Meeting.
Any comments there? No, all in favor? Opposed? Perfect. And we're going to move into recognition. We have a robust recognition tonight, which was some exciting things that I will hand over to Dr. Turner rather than take for myself, because I'm generous that way, but it's a very good recognition package tonight.
Very exciting recognition package. So I'm going to invite Ms. Graylish to come up to the microphone with some exciting -- I think they'll be able to see you better there -- with some exciting new, shall I call it, hardware for our schools. U.S. News &amp; World Report ranks high schools across the country every year, and we are beyond delighted to announce that this year, Gray New Gloucester High School was ranked second.
So I am very proud to share that our high school and district was ranked number two by the U.S. News &amp; World Report. This ranking, I think, reflects district-wide, our strong academic performance, our high graduation rates, success in our IB and college-level courses, and just a strong dedication to all of our teachers, our incredible staff throughout the district. Again, this is not just high school, it's pre-K-12 all the way through. And also, being recognized at this level, I think, shows that we're going in the right direction. So I think people can say, oh, data shows this or this, but regardless how you look at it, it shows that the work we're doing inside the classroom and beyond is definitely working, and we are moving in the right direction. So very proud to share this incredible accomplishment. And now we have some swag, and we'll have enough.
Well, swag and hardware.
Yes, yes. Now, we'll have one in the gymnasium area and then one in the lobby as well. Very proud, and thank you to you all, because we couldn't do the work that we do each and every day. And I know a lot of times you don't get the recognition, but we definitely appreciate all that you do for us, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's very exciting. Going for number one.
Maggie, Sadie already told the number-one principal we're coming for them. Maybe, allegedly. Excellent. Okay, so then our next recognition, as I shared with all of you at the time, this summer was not what we would call a regular summer, and I did not want to drag our lovely new hires through the craziness that was our summer and have them sitting through meetings that we just weren't sure exactly how they were going to go, because we did have so much public comment, which was fantastic, but we wanted to be thoughtful of their time. So instead, we said we would invite them back, and here we are. And this is our new crew of people. So I'm going to invite -- they're listed in your agenda. I did include bullet points with a little bit of their background. My intention would be moving forward to kind of include that as we go with hires. So we should talk a little bit about, with the board, about how helpful that is for you. But I wanted to provide it as the overview for recognition, but I'll leave it to the administrators to speak to their folks. So not everyone is here tonight, I don't think, but most everyone is. So we'll just work our way through the list. And Abby is the first one on our list. I'm just glad Chris knocked that over and not one of us.
All right. I am very proud to introduce -- I have several staff members. Are we going to go in order, or can I just do my folks?
I think it's okay if you just want to do your folks, but they have to come up. That's part of the role.
Yeah, absolutely. Abigail Bolvin, who doesn't really exist anymore.
I was just going to say, that's not your right name. I'm so sorry, Abby. Abby just got married, everyone.
Come on over, yes. Yes, very exciting. Got married, got a new job. It's, everything's great. Yeah, Abby's joining us. She comes to us with a couple of years of experience in the past, but is just a joy already on staff, has picked up coaching for us already, and that's always right. That's always a need at the middle school. So she's coaching seventh-grade girl soccer with us as well, and we're just really excited to have Abby join us.
Great, welcome. I missed it in the excitement. What is, in fact, your real name?
So my maiden name is Bolvin, but it will be changed legally to Moran.
Moran, okay. All right, any particular questions? All right, thanks.
All right. Next on my list is Samuel Fairfield. Sam is coming to us. He has five years of experience teaching social studies, and he's going to be teaching social studies for us. Another gain for our coaching crew. Sam will be coaching our seventh-grade boys' soccer team. So that's really great. And just for reference, for you guys and for, I guess, anybody in the community, right, having staff members who also do things with our kids, coaching, clubs, all of that, just helps build those relationships, and it's so much better for our kids to have those internal people. Not that there's anything wrong with anybody that comes in from outside, it's just if you're there in the building every day, you have that chance to touch base with students, and it just makes a real big difference for us. So really appreciate Sam joining us. And Sam will be joining the wedded bliss crew in October, right?
This month.
This mo -- no.
In a couple of weeks.
Sooner than I thought. So Sam will also be a newlywed shortly.
Wow, welcome, Sam. I actually have an inside track, because I have a student in one of your classes, and lots of exciting news coming home about the wonderful new teacher. So welcome to the middle school.
Thank you very much.
Next, I have Holly Feeny. Holly's coming to us. I think one of the cool things that happens quite often for us is we have a real variety of people, people that come with a real variety of backgrounds. And Holly's coming to us with a lot of experience, and experience not only as a classroom teacher, but she served as a dean of students, she served as an assistant principal. So she has some really great experience that it's always good to have somebody else on board. We can pick their brain, too. So Holly will be, is teaching fifth grade this year, her math and science, and that's Holly. And last, but not least for me, Rachel, I'm not really skipping you. Holly is going to -- Rachel is ours at the middle school, too. I'm very proud of that as well. Bailey McGee. So Bailey's joining us. Bailey is really our newest, right? Newest to the education profession. She served as an ed tech last year in a behavior program. So she had that experience, and she's also got some really neat, working for Maine Audubon, working for the wildlife park, just real-life experience that she can bring into the classroom and show our kids, this is where you go with it. So I think that's going to be really neat, teaching science to our seventh and eighth graders.
All right, welcome. Thanks for being here.
And Holly's taking over.
So this year, we hired three special education teachers, all at the middle school. And typically, the first position, in my experience, that we fill when I have openings is a resource room teacher. And somehow, this time, it was the last position we filled. We're not sure why, but we were thrilled, because we got Rachel Martel. Come on up, Rachel. So Rachel, we interviewed Rachel probably about 10 days before school was starting, and she said to us, I don't know why I didn't see this advertisement for this position earlier, but everything happens for a reason. And we were like, we so agree. Everything does happen for a reason, and we wanted to hire Rachel, and we did it pretty fast, so we got her here. And Rachel is new to being a teacher, but has five years' experience as an ed tech at Harrison Middle School in Yarmouth, so she's certainly familiar with that middle school age group and loves them, and we're thrilled to have her.
Welcome, thank you.
Sadie, you want to go next?
Excellent. It is my pleasure to introduce Jen Humphrey. Jen comes to us from Oceanside School, has about 10 years' experience in a variety of middle schools and high schools, teaching foundations-level classes all the way through advanced placement classes. Her references could not say enough wonderful things about being dependable, student-centered, just really meeting the kids where they are and making those real-world math connections, which we know for non-math people can be challenging sometimes. Some classes of like, what was it, math, like sports in the math world, and looking at measurements and dynamics, and sort of creating classes based on student interest, which we're definitely looking forward to tapping her in that area. And currently, she's teaching two levels of geometry and algebra with our students, and we are very excited to have her experience and expertise at the high school.
You're welcome, thank you.
And Morgan? So a quick funny story. As she comes up, Morgan is interviewing with us, and the fire alarm goes off in the middle of one of her questions. And if you're in the main office conference room, it is loud. And so Morgan kind of jumps up, and we knew, when she came back in the room and didn't miss a beat, we're like, she's good. So Morgan graduated this May from the University of Maine-Orinoco. She taught, or she has a Bachelor's of Science in Mathematics at the secondary level. She taught at both middle school and high school through an internship in Old Town. And she also was a head coach for a club volleyball team. Both references, supervisors, coaches, could not say enough wonderful things about Morgan, how professional she is, dedicated she is. I think one of the coaches actually said we would pay her a stipend just to drive to and from Old Town, and we're disappointed when she wasn't willing to do that. But we were very fortunate, again, to have Morgan as part of our team and looking forward to her working with a variety of students. She's currently teaching three levels of geometry and algebra II classes as well, so.
Welcome. All right, welcome. Nice to have a UMaine grad.
All right, thank you, everyone. And then there's one more. Amy Crosby was not able to be here tonight, and so I told Jeff he didn't have to come, that I would handle it. But we are thrilled bringing Amy on into our part-time art position at Dunn School, which a part-time position can be sometimes a little challenging to hire for, and then sometimes the stars align and we end up with the Amys of the world. So Amy was a longtime art teacher and had left teaching to raise her family and is looking to get back into teaching just a little bit, but not a lot. She misses the kids, she misses teaching, but she's not ready to commit to a full teaching schedule, so when she saw our posting, she said, I knew this was perfect for me. So we are beyond delighted. She has over 15 years' experience in elementary art education and has been nominated as the Main Art Teacher of the Year multiple years in a row. So we are just thrilled to be bringing her on staff. She has hit the ground running over there and just is really going to be such an add to both Dunn School and also our pre-K-12 art department. I think she's going to be a fantastic asset. So overall, I'm just, I couldn't say enough about this crew of teachers we've brought on this year. They are smart, they are experienced, they come from so many different backgrounds, they're adding to our teaching and instructional staff, they're adding to our co-curricular and athletic staff. They're just overall really rounding us out, and as I said, I could not be more thrilled. They all came to two days of new teacher orientation, and then they still came back, so that was great. And we threw a lot at them in a short period of time, and they just, they have exceeded every expectation, so we're so happy to be able to introduce them to you tonight.
Great. I do really appreciate everyone coming in. I know this is a little clunky and not the most, it's a little awkward situation to attempt to quasi-meet folks, but it really does mean a lot for us to get to see your faces and know who's in the school, and just to get to welcome you and thank you for being here. Before we let this batch of bright, shiny teacher faces go, did anyone have any questions or thoughts that they wanted to ask or say before we move on? All right, awesome. As is our custom, please do not feel obligated to stay, but we certainly welcome you if you'd like to enjoy a school board meeting. All right, moving into, bear with me, I've got myself all out of order here. So now we're going to do our executive session. As I said at the beginning of the meeting, in case you're just joining us now, we are going to step out for an executive session for a student matter. Before we get a motion on that, I just want to remind folks that we will be coming back on camera after, so this does not mark the end of our meeting. And I would hear a motion on that executive session.
I make the motion that we enter into executive session, I forgot to say the pursuant, to MRSA 4056B with action to follow.
Disgusting? All in favor? Opposed? All right, we're going to executive session at 6:54. All right, we're going to executive session at 6:54. All right, welcome back. We are out of executive session at 7:15. And I would be delighted to hear a motion relative to that executive session.
I'm going to make the motion to consider readmittance of a student who was expelled from school on the grounds that the student has submitted satisfactory evidence that the behavior that was the cause of the student being excelled will not likely reoccur.
All right, and, thank you. And all in favor? Opposed? And abstain? All right, do you get that, Maggie? Okay, great. So that motion passes handily, and we will, all right, Dr. Turner is going to be joining us soon. And in the meantime, I'll do a little tap dance because I think she's the one who's going to talk about our change in the school calendar. So moving into some old business, folks who have done this a few times will be familiar with our revisiting the calendar a couple of times once it's been approved, does the kinks get worked out or things pop up. This is going to be one of those times. We will have a scheduling conflict that is driving graduation to be moved to May 28th, previously on the 29th. This is actually in our favor as I believe it also frees up a very big conflict with some potentially graduates and a state track meet that may have prevented them from attending graduation, which we do not want for any of our graduates. Did I say all the right things? Okay, so this change in the school calendar would just simply move our early release day from 5/29 to Thursday, May 28th. So if we had a motion on that.
I make the motion to consider a change to the 2025-2026 school calendar.
Second. Any questions or discussion on that change? Great, all in favor? Opposed? Perfect, we have another new school calendar.
I might add as an aside that part of the negotiation with the scheduling conflict, we have now locked in the Thursday after Memorial Day for graduation for the next seven years. So mark your calendars if you have kids graduating.
All right, next is computation of results. So we had our budget validation referendum, special referendum on August 26 to put our budget, 25-26 school budget in front of our Towns of Gray New Gloucester for a second time. Delighted to report that that measure passed solidly.
That's what you said.
That is the motion.
That's the motion.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I would hear a motion to compute the results of the budget validation referendum, August 6th, 2025, as certified by town managers of Gray and New Gloucester.
Second.
Great, any questions, discussion on that? It's just part of our due diligence, all in favor? Opposed? Great, and we'll just take the time right now so no one escapes and sign what we need to sign. This is just where we are agreeing with and validating the results of that vote. Yes, the numbers were well communicated, but what was it? It was Maggie, it was 1,147 yeses and 815 nos?
Yeah, I have it on paper, but that's actually out.
Yes.
I know.
It's a very important number to me, so I've committed it to memory, considering getting a tattoo. On that matter, why we're all signing, I do want to say I appreciate the folks who came out to vote. 2,000 people on a random Tuesday in August during back-to-school time to vote on a single question is not nothing and we appreciate people taking the time. All right, thank you Maggie. Moving on, we have an item on the Department of Education School Revolving Renovation Fund Program. I will ask Dr. Turner to speak to this more, but folks will remember this process where we use this fund for our air quality project and we have an upcoming deadline for a new round of funding.
So the application process for school renovation funds for priority one, which is a very specific definition, but it means sort of our highest need projects, has opened again. That is the same priority level that we got our other four schools approved under and Russell School just missed the cutoff by a little bit. So we are recommending that we move forward with an application. The process is that with board approval by vote, we would submit the application. Our intention is to submit the same application. We have, we're getting updated information into it, but other than that, it's for the same project. The submitting the application commits us to nothing. So a vote tonight only authorizes myself and our staff to submit an application. Once we submit an application, it's considered. It may or may not be selected. If for some reason it is selected, the board would then move forward as to whether they wanted to continue with the program and if they did want to continue it, it would then go out. Our portion that we would need to borrow for that project would go out to a bond probably in the spring. So we are asking for the board's support to move forward in submitting an application, but I do want to stress that that commits us to nothing at this point, other than to put our hat in the ring. And if we were to make the list, we would then have a bigger discussion as a facilities committee and a school board as to how we wanted to, how and if we wanted to move forward.
Any, well, actually, let's do this in the right order, shall we? Let's have a motion on the table before we discuss.
So I make the motion to consider applying for the State of Maine Department of Education School Revolving Renovation Fund Program as recommended by the facilities committee on 8/20/25.
Second. Great. Discussion on this, questions about the process or the project? Anybody?
So the Maine DOE breaks, Maine DOE Revolving Renovation Fund provides funding assistance to SAUs. Like Dr. Turner said, broken into five priorities based on last year's priority list. It doesn't look like we're going to get out of priority one needs around the state for some time. Looks like we missed getting Russell School funded by one spot based off of last year's SRRF-funded projects. Mechanical Services has agreed to just tweak our application. It's not like a full-blown resubmital. We don't really know what other schools' facility tragedies have been since last year, so we may not be first just because we were one off the list last year, but we feel pretty good about Russell School potentially being awarded what we need. The deadline's end of October. Potential funding would be January 30th of 2026. It kind of gets into our facilities report, but so far, everything, facilities and staffing, working with Mechanical Services has been good. So if we did go through with it, I think we would have confidence in the project again.
Just as a point of clarity, if we go through the process and get an award and decide to move forward, we would still bid that new project again.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
They would be invited to.
Right.
To bid.
But we have confidence in them helping us put our application together.
Thank you Adam. Any, anyone else? Questions, thoughts? We did go through this in great detail the first time around and the folks helping us did a really great job, which is probably why we scored so well. All right, let's put it to vote. All in favor? Great, opposed? Wonderful, so we will stay tuned and see how we do. Dr. Turner, do you remember about when those awards, when we find out?
I believe January.
Okay.
January 3rd.
Okay, perfect. Great, and back to new business and our funding and taxes. We do have to have a very specific motion around the warrants for assessment of tax and schedule notice to both towns. Hear a motion on that?
I make the motion that we move that the warrant for assessment of tax and the assessment schedule and notice of installments for each member municipality, prepared by the treasurer for the fiscal year 2025 to 26, be approved and be issued in form presented to this meeting. And that the treasurer be authorized and directed to deliver to each member municipality its warrant for assessment of tax and its assessment schedule and notice of installments.
Second. All right, so we can see these attached and is what we would need to sign tonight. Essentially, our notice to each Gray and New Gloucester as to what the final local share will be and the dates on which those would be collected for us from each town. Any questions or discussion on this process? All right, all in favor moving ahead there? Opposed? Wonderful, we will once again invite Maggie down to have us sign things. Please use her black pen. All right, thanks everybody. That concludes our school budget. Does that conclude our school budget responsibilities for the fiscal year? All right. Perfect, so just in time for October, September, October, so.
Time to get going again.
Yeah, finance will have maybe two meetings where you don't have to talk about the school budget, so I hope you have something good planned Sam. All right, committee reports. The only committee who has met and had minutes since our last business meeting is facilities. Adam, would you care to share?
So facilities met. We met at Dunn. Talked about trying to hold some of our meetings in all of our different buildings to just kind of get eyes on what the district had for facilities. We started hearing, or we started talking about planned projects not yet started. Talked about how the upcoming projects would align with like co-curricular and athletic activities. Tom was pretty confident we could be flexible scheduling our staff so that we could get things that needed to get done in time, done on time. Lots of parking lot resurfacing all around the district. The big, kind of one of the big things we talked about was the new potentially booster-funded snack shack. Boosters seem like they're kind of waiting for our questions, comments, and looking to address that in their design. So that was good to hear, the talk about making it semi-mobile. So then, in the event we did a large project, we could potentially move the building. They're looking to unveil that sometime next summer or fall. For in-progress projects, the big ones are HVAC project. Tom spoke pretty highly about our staff working alongside Mechanical Services. I was in Memorial last week and we no longer have those great big fans in the gym, so that's, that's an upgrade. Most, we're like 75% complete. Most of the ongoing work are in less invasive areas like hallways and our fields are in good shape. We entered the year last year in good shape and continue into this year. We did have to rest some fields, which was not super well-received, but the condition of the fields is now being well-received, so apologies are in the mail. For, we pretty much covered the school, SRRF project. We did all then walk around Dunn. Everyone was pretty much pleased with the condition of Dunn School. They've done super good work there, all in-house and all using existing materials. It's looking good. There's two spots left and then we've completely redone the entire school flooring. And that's pretty much it.
Questions for facilities? I think the only thing I would add on the tour was Dunn, the beautiful work being done outside with the in-house repairs on all the siding and painting. Looks amazing. And folks can see that online on the district's new social media accounts. So rolling into the school board chair report, I would encourage folks to get online on Instagram, on Facebook. Where can they find those? Do we have links on our website?
We have links on our website.
We have the, we have little icons.
Bottom left-hand side.
If you're not already following.
She doesn't have a mic.
Go to the website, find the little Facebook and the little Instagram and help, help us build that online community. You can see some before and after pictures of some of the facilities work that's being done. You can see some of the back-to-school stuff, the functional things like the school bus routes and also some pictures of our teacher orientation and stuff like that, so.
Our new staff.
Pictures of the new staff.
I would point out those icons that link you are directly above our brand-new badge on our website of being the best high school, best high schools in U.S. 25-26.
We're learning how to be very flashy, so. So please help us share and use those and also be patient as we learn new things and get better all the time, you know, on how we use that and how it looks. So also, we have a new version of our, our school board calendar. That's linked in materials for tonight as well. It does look a little trickier than it has in the past, so I hope everyone took a good critical look at it. You'll see that we move around with our workshop to tour the different schools. In doing so, we poll the facilities committee, so special attention to those on the facilities committee. Your meeting will routinely probably be in a different space than it was the month before. We are, will be doing, the curriculum committee that follow, excuse me, precedes our business meeting in the high school, well, that will alternate as our, as our meetings alternate. So we're going to use this nice new setup we've been practicing with and switch between the here and the Dunn, the Dunn Gymnasium. So as is in our bylaws, our intent is to try to switch between Gray and New Gloucester. We used to do that with the, with the town meeting spaces. We're going to try to do it with our schools. Hence why we've picked up some of our own professional-looking meetings set up. So thank you to Maggie and Chris for making that happen. Get your feedback on these mics. I feel like these are working a lot better. And then we have some committees meeting at the Dunn School Library and the High School Library. I think the early feedback from folks after our workshop was that we found. I think the early feedback from folks after our workshop was that we found the sound in the space of the Dunn Library to be preferable to the High School Library, it was easier to hear. So if folks have feedback about that, just let me know, and we'll continue to massage this. So I would say this is the plan, but do check before you head to a meeting as we continue to improve or finalize that. Does anyone have any questions, feedback, find any glaring errors in that calendar? Okay. And Gary is now chairing our Curriculum Committee and is in the unenviable space of meeting directly before the school board meeting. Well, it's nice for timing, but your personal timing, but not great for reporting out. So we've conferred, and Gary's gonna trail, so we can have prepared minutes. So we'll start getting Curriculum Committee reports next month to make sense of this calendar. And I think that is it for me. One last reminder, you all should have an email reminder from me to chime in, research, ask questions, give feedback on a couple of things from our workshop last time. Folks at home can find the materials from our workshop in our meeting materials from last, our first workshop of the year, but where we talked about potential exploitation of Portrait of a Graduate, our goals for ourselves, revisiting a strategic plan, and looking at our board handbook and norms. So that all continues to be homework before our next workshop. Questions? All right, great. Superintendent Report.
We have a long list of information to share with you. I am not gonna speak at each person to length, I may just note a couple of things I think will be of interest to the board, but it has been a busy month. We have hired Kaylee Chase as a van aide. Kaylee has worked in a couple of different positions in our district over the years, so we're delighted to have her back as a van aide. We've hired Claire Wilson as an ed tech two at the middle school. Claire is one of the people that came on board when we did the partnership with SMCC to train ed techs up, and so she came on board. She's been at Memorial School helping out for a couple of years, so we're seeing that program, that first cohort of people coming in, and she applied for a position, and we were delighted to be able to hire her. We've also hired Daniel Moore as an ed tech three in our day one program, Daniel Jenkins as an ed tech three here at the high school, Lisa Haynes as an ed tech one here at the middle school, Janice Minario and Chelsea Yaton as two of many of the food service assistants I'm delighted to have on the list, Lisa Ingram as a bus driver, super psyched to have that, Tracy Levesque as a food service assistant, Emily Lund as a food service assistant, Joseph Campbell as a permanent substitute here at the high school. That's the sub that we have here every day to float and help us out with openings we might have. And then Katie Sinclair has come on board as an ed tech two at the middle school. We do have two resignations. One was Kim Campbell, who is a fifth-grade math science teacher at the middle school. You met Kim's replacement tonight, so we were lucky, we were able to turn that around fairly quickly. And then we are sad to see Shawna Negron heading on, our secretary at the middle school, and that job is posted. Some transfers that we have, she, Lily Frazier, is moving from an ed tech position at Dunn School to an ed tech three position at the middle school, and Tessa Benson is staying at Memorial School, but she's moving from a special services ed tech program to a regular ed response to intervention support program. And then we did have two retirements in the month of August. One was Diane Wilkinson, a van driver, and then we also had a retirement from Gail Barkmichel, who is a teacher here at the high school. She teaches or taught in our alternative education program, so we wish the two of them the best of luck on their retirements. So then I wanted to give you a staffing update. What does that mean for how we're doing as far as being staffed? And I could not be more pleased, we're doing really, really well compared to frankly, many of our neighbors, as well as how we've done in years past. So right now, we only have two, well, we have two athletics positions for the fall. We've got a couple assistant or JV assistant positions open, but we only had two that weren't, and that was seventh-grade girls and boys soccer. And as Rick shared with you tonight, we don't usually talk about coaching hires, but those are still posted on our website, but we have moved forward with the hiring process with two of our new teachers, so those will be coming down pretty soon. So we do have that alternative education high school teacher posted from Ms. Marshall's retirement, and then we have a special education high school teacher position open as well. The middle school secretary, which I just alluded to, out of all of the ed techs now that our budget has passed and we have made those reductions along with the hires, right now, we have two ed tech positions open. So again, not bad, we'll take it. In addition, for food service, right now, I need one more food service assistant to be fully staffed in that department. And then for transportation, we have a mechanic position open, and then we have our van driver from Ms. Wilkinson's retirement, that position is open, and other than that, we are fully staffed in transportation.
Mike.
Lose a bus driver, hence the dilemma yesterday and today?
We have a situation with a bus driver that I probably can't talk about.
That's okay, just, no, I just don't know if it was a part of the like higher, one of these people or something that happened.
No, we, we will probably have on the agenda a conversation for Facilities about kind of where we are with that department and some things we may need to do, but we have some unexpected health situations in that department that we're responding to.
Just out of curiosity.
Any other questions about staffing update? It is incredibly exciting to hear us be so staffed. I feel like we can't name it or look at it because then something happens, but that's all wonderful news, and it was really exciting to get to see so many new faces tonight. And that brings us to the end of our agenda.
Second.
We are adjourned 7:46.